If you want to see, you come to your house and tell you how clean it is.
I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sorry about that. I'm having pop-ups over here on the screen. Mayor Susan Payne?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald?
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley?
Here.
Commissioner Josh Ridden?
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson?
Thank you. Sorry, I have a friend over here and I'm trying to explain to her what we're doing. And I will introduce her in just a moment, I promise. But before we do that, we do not have someone to do invocation this month, so I will go ahead and do it myself, actually. And then that will be followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Burnett. If everybody will stand, please. If you would like, please join me in prayer. Father God, we thank you for this day, Lord, another day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it, Lord. I thank you for this time. I thank you for this city, Lord, and I lift each and every citizen up to you, Lord, and I pray that you would just be with us, Lord. As we go through the business tonight, lot to discuss, and I pray, Lord, that you would just lead us and give us ears to hear and open minds, Lord, and help us, Lord, to make decisions that are best for this city. Lord, I pray that you would just lead us, guide us, direct us, protect us in all that we do and all that we say, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We are going to get started with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. No, yeah.
Not yet. We're not at that point.
No, not yet. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of them.
A motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Will the clerk please put up the vote?
And Commissioner Mc- Mayor Pro Tem McDonald?
I'm trying. Yes, I got it.
And motion passes six zero. Before we move on to presentations, I do want to introduce my new friend. I have told this story like five times today, but I'll tell it one more, just because. So I was downtown at Christmas on Main Street back in December, and if you didn't go, you missed something phenomenal, because it really was great, and I'm so impressed that they actually pulled that off. But anyway, I was there and I went to several of the booths, as I always do, and I went to one particular booth, and this is Abby. Abby was sitting at one of the booths. And I don't typically tell people who I am, and I assume nobody knows who the mayor is. I don't know if that's a good assumption or not, but I didn't know who the mayor was like fifteen years ago, so I just assumed people don't know. So I'm minding my business, and Abby said, aren't you the mayor? And I kind of laughed, and I said, well, I don't know. It depends. Do you like the mayor or not? And she said she did, and I said, okay, well, in that case, I'm the mayor. And so we got to talking, and Abby's brother had some really cool stuff that he was selling, and one of the things that he was selling was a map of Alamogordo, but the format was Mario Brothers. And my daughter, who just moved to Arizona, she is of the era of Mario Brothers, and so I bought her a map, because I thought it was cool. And then we got to talking, and I- and her brother told me that she wanted to be the mayor someday, and, you know, I thought, hmm, you may want to rethink that, but it's okay. We're not going to disillusion her right now, so. And so I invited her. I gave her my card, and I told her to please call me, and that I would show you around City Hall, and I would invite you to a commission meeting and set you up on the dais, so you could check it out. Abby is a senior at Alamogordo High School, and she called me, and she said, do you remember me? I said, how could I forget you, right? And so here she is, and Abby's mother is back there. Congratulations, your daughter is phenomenal, and your son- is that your son? He makes really great maps. I'll show you a picture afterwards. My daughter just thought that was like the coolest present she ever received. So if you will help me, join me in welcoming Abby to the city commission tonight. And I always think it's cool when young people are interested in government, and so, of course, obviously, that's one of my passions. That was my major in college, and so I'm excited to have you. Thank you for being here. And with that, we're going to move on to presentations, and this is happy sad, happy sad. So I'm going to have former Commissioner and now state senator in college. Supposed to be here in December, and I told everybody, I said, oh, this is going to be like really cool, like little like. Anyway, that's okay. That's all right. We can have fun with this. So I'm going to just talk about you for a second. Nick Potter was a very well-known pediatrician in Alamogordo, and his mother was, well, I know she was a nurse, but she was also a teacher at Community Christian School. She was my oldest daughter's teacher, and I remember the family way back, actually. And so I remember when he applied to be on the commission, I was like, wow, that, I wouldn't have thought about that, but that's very cool. And so we were excited to have Nick on the commission, and then he ran again. And then, out of the blue, I get this pass message one day from the, I don't even know who it was from, but it just said, Nick Paul President. And I'm like, whoa, what just happened here? And so, but I'm excited about that, and I absolutely supported him on that. I think that we are very blessed in our community, number one, to have now two of the three state representatives, if you will, that live right here in Alamogordo. And of course, the third one is Jim Townsend, and he is now senator as well, and he's just phenomenal. I can't say enough good things about Jim. So I'm excited for you. I'm sad that you're going to be leaving us, but I am excited for your next adventure. You know you will get lots of phone calls from me. And it's great that I- you know, what's really great about this, and I said this at Ron Grig's going away too, what's really great about this is Nick has sat on our commission, and so he understands what we do here in the city and what we go through and the barriers that we face as local officials, and, you know, oftentimes, people think, well, the city can do this and the city can do that, and they don't understand there are state laws that prevent us from doing that. And so Nick understands that, and so I think it's going to be a really great partnership, because you understand the barriers we face, and you're going to be able to go up there and help us fix some of that. So we are going to miss you. We truly are. I've got to tell you, I truly am going to miss you. You know, you get comfortable with people, and then, and then you're sitting here going, okay, what next? And so, but God always has a plan. I know he does, and he is kind of somebody phenomenal in that seat, I'm sure of it. So with that, I do have a plaque for you. Does I do this for you? Yeah, okay. In appreci- in recognition, appreciation of your service from December two thousand twenty-one to December two thousand twenty-four to the community as city commissioner for District One, thank you for your dedication to New Mexico residents and your new role as state senator at Trumpy Alamo City Commission. There you go.
Thank you very much.
I'll stay down here so he doesn't look this tall. Or like that to his knee or something like that. Thank you. You really are a good person, but I'm super excited, super proud of you. You know, when, goodness gracious, I'm getting old, and I'm like, I remember when he wasn't that tall, right? And so, you know, to see him all grown up and, and you too, actually. I remember her being your mom at the main school. So it's crazy to see, they're not kids anymore. They're not kids, right? And so, but due to the reasons we're people gathering, but I know it's going to be wonderful.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and to the rest of the commissioners, city staff. Honestly, it was a pleasure being able to serve in this position. I thank the people that voted for me from District One, all the voters there, but yeah, it was an honor and privilege, you know. Abby, I applaud you for being as young as you are, taking a, you know, a step to understand just local government. This is where action happens. You know, at the state level, yeah, it affects our daily lives, but this is where we all live, work, and play, and so, you know, I applaud everybody that decides to throw a maiden hat to this, because it's not an easy job all the time, but thank you guys for always being great to serve with us.
All right. Well, thank you. Congratulations. All right. Let me get my bearings straight here. All right, we are going to move on to public comment. I have four people signed up for public comment. I'm going to take them in order. They're speaking on different agenda items that may not be necessarily be in order, but I'm going to go ahead and take them in order, and we're going to start with Kelvin Holly. If you want to come up here, and if you come up to the mic and state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes. And he's speaking on item six. I'm sorry, item six.
Thank you, ma'am. My name's Kelvin Holly, and I just want to speak on item six, which is a house that's up for condemnation. I'm up for it to be condemned. There's a lot of us in that neighborhood. I don't live here anymore, but I own a house down there still, and my house, along with several other houses in those neighborhoods, are still well-kept up, and we're dealing with houses that are not kept up, and they are just making the neighborhood miserable from stealing utilities from us. For five, six months, I had to deal with a $700 water bill, and it was one of my own relatives stealing the water. So this house that's up for condemnation is a relative of mine, that's part of this whole deal. That house, along with the house beside it, have become trap houses. And for those that don't know what a trap house is, it's dope. People go in and come anytime they want to. Right now, they're parking all in the alleys and staying over at these houses at night, you know, so it's not safe for the community, and any other community shouldn't want this in their community. So I'm here on behalf of these communities, you know, when I was a kid, this used to be a pretty town, and I hate even driving through here now, because it has just turned to trash. And I think the community, the people, we have to do what we have to do to take our city back. So I'm for what's- I just think the process to get rid of some of these nuisance houses is too long.
I agree.
I wish we can get it shortened up. I don't know how the rules are. I know there's a lot of technicalities here, but we do need to do something to try to get this done.
Thank you so much. I really, I want to tell you that I really appreciate your words, and I appreciate your honesty. I know that wasn't easy, because, as you said, it's a family member, but thank you so much. I appreciate you coming. Okay, next, we have Derek, is it Derek? Derek Washington, sir, same thing. If you'll come up and state your name for the record, also on item six, and you will have three minutes, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name's Derek Washington. I'm just going to repeat what Kelvin Holly said. I didn't grow up in that neighborhood, but I was raised in that neighborhood, basically, and I've seen it just fall apart, you know, over the years. Having lived here in twenty years, and I'm moving back, not likely to see what I see down there, and it is a relative's house that's being condemned, and yes, the process that it's taking to get it done is, it takes too long, you know. Of course, I don't want to, you know, put people out of their homes that are legitimately having a hard time, but when it's just infested with drugs, you know, it's not safe for the children. You know, there's been kids in and out of this home, so it just needs to be taken care of. It's just bad for the community all around. So I just wanted to, you know, repeat what he had to say about it, and hopefully, we can get something done quickly.
And I will just repeat what I said. Thank you very much for doing that. We need to hear more of that, honestly, in person. We need to hear more of that, so thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Okay. Next, we have Jacob. Is it Justice? And this is item four. And if you'll state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jacob Justice, and I'm here speaking on item four, the ordinance for public and private camping. I think this ordinance does nothing but criminalize homelessness in Alamogordo. It overburdens police, and it obfuscates what people can do on their own private property. The language in the ordinance is specifically referencing the Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson-Scottis case, which says that it's not cruel and unusual to inflict these types of ordinances and penalties against the homeless population, whereas before that ruling was cruel and unusual, that was what SCOTUS overruled. Additionally, with it being an ordinance that's enforced through the penal system, we're going to be overburdening police as they could be, you know, stopping, like, violent crimes, property crimes, instead of doing things that social workers or social services should be taking care of, as we kind of discussed at the Public Safety Town Hall last Saturday. The fiscally responsible solution is housing-first initiatives, like we see at Camp Hope in Las Cruces. I think they do a fantastic job at serving their unhoused population. I think we could learn from them. Finally, I think the ordinance actually goes against the mission statement on the very front page of our notice of meeting, where the city of Alamogordo exists solely for the purpose of providing the best possible services to our customers, the citizens of Alamogordo, and we're committed to these services with honesty, integrity, compassion, fairness, and a commitment to excellence, and that y'all are committed to the long-term financial stability and responsible growth of the city, driven by the economic realities. The economic realities are that people's water bills and power bills are increasing, and that this ordinance, if they find themselves out of a house due to those increasing prices, could find themselves out of the house into jail. I hope that we can come to different conclusions about how to care for unhoused citizens in ways that put them in houses first with affordable access to medical and mental health treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Courtney, is it Squires?
McCary Squires.
Yeah, okay. McCary Squires, and also on item four.
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
My name is Courtney McCary Squires. Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners and City Manager Hernandez, I'm here also to address item four in the consent agenda regarding the encampment ordinance. I do want to say that when I saw the ordinance, I was really optimistic about seeing it, because it opens up the possibilities to have more conversations about ways that the city can support nonprofits or community-based organizations to create more public and private partnerships to be able to address the issues with our current housing deficiency. But over the last several weeks, since the first publication of this ordinance, I've seen a lot of talk in the community, whether it be on Facebook, in person. I was at a 100% Otero Housing Meeting today, and there's just so much dissatisfaction in the community about this ordinance. The residents here are not happy with the way that it is written, and a lot of people feel that it's extremely discriminatory because of some of the punitive aspects of the ordinance. So I am here to speak on behalf of With Many Hands' stance on this ordinance and the things that we are also not in agreement with in regards to how the ordinance has been written, but I'm also hoping to speak on behalf of some of our community members who think that this ordinance isn't just and could be revisited and reviewed in a way that is more fair and compassionate towards the residents here of Alamogordo. I'm hoping that when we look at the consent agenda, the commission would consider pulling that item from the consent agenda, so that it can be discussed, and some of the issues that could be hit on are potential litigation that this ordinance could open up for the city, some of the ramifications that the city and the county would be experiencing when the police force is having to enforce arrest warrants for the residents who aren't able to pay these fines, and then also the taxpayer money that then is going towards jailing these residents at our local facilities. So I would ask that you please pull this item from the consent agenda, and then during the discussion and the vote, please consider voting against the language that is currently in the ordinance and revisiting it, taking into consideration input from community members as well as nonprofit partnerships, so that as a, as a whole, in a holistic approach, we can look at creating an ordinance that would be satisfactory for all of the community members. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, we are going to move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Commission, Happy New Year. So I wanted to just cover a couple of things. I want to say thank you to our legislators. We now have the grants, the capital outlet grants for our Alamogordo Park Zoo facility, construction for the bear enclosure, the restroom constructions for the zoo, Dudley School, Community Center, and Playground Equipment, the Desert Lakes Gulf Irrigation System replacement, the library patio construction for the north side, and vehicle replacements for our officers. So in total, it comes out to a little more than 1.7 million, and we just received those grants. So I just wanted to say thanks to the legislators and inform you we do have that money coming. And then I just kind of wanted to briefly touch on the fund center. The RFP is just about ready to go out. We just need to get the contract ready to put it out with it. I just wanted to give you kind of the way it's going to be structured, the scope of work. Instead of tying the hands of the proposers, we know that there are specific things that need to be met, because it was voted on as a recreation center. So in the scope of work, the individual has to have experience with a bowling alley and then propose what other recreations, recreation that they're going to have in the facility. Because they have the industrial kitchen, they have to have some type of restaurant menu. It's up to them to propose what exactly that they're going to provide to us. We are able to provide our liquor license to them, so they'll have to, of course, they can use our liquor license, but of course, they have to do all the background checks and have all the federal requirements. And to get kind of, the lease issue is a big one, so we're going to go to a revenue model, Sharon, and put that out there to see where we get a percentage of the revenue, as opposed to make them pay the lease amount. Once we get this out, which should be here, and hopefully by the end of the month, have to emphasize this extremely, no commissioner can talk about it to anybody. Once it goes out for RFP, the only communication that can happen, they need to go directly to the purchasing, the purchasing officer, which is Barb Payet. We'll have it out there probably for about thirty days, and then get the proposals in. We'll have a committee of seven scoring them, and we'll have them submit presentations, and then those presentations, I don't, we'll come with a recommendation for commission, and then we'll put the presentations also on the agenda, so you can see what was presented. So just wanted to give you kind of a, this is where we're at.
So we'll get to see, I mean, yeah, we'll get to see all the presentations, but then you'll have a recommendation of like the top three or four or something?
Yeah, we'll have it scored with a committee of seven.
Okay. Okay, got it. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
So this is for Stephanie. I spoke to you briefly on customer service. I had a phone call today regarding the water department, and the amount of time, I guess when there's like a turn- of time, I guess when there's like a turn-ons timeframe, they're, they're, they give you, okay, like the afternoon or the morning. And like, his complaint was, you know, can, can they call me when they're on their way or something like that? So I was going to say, hey, can we maybe look at, uh, some kind of system, a text message system, or a way to phone call people that can't sit around for four or five hours waiting?
Which is fair. I, I, I understand. I feel that way sometimes too, when I have to get things turned on. So I will work with the Customer Service Department to see if there's anything that we can do to work on trying, when it's turn-ons, because we can't do shut-offs because there's too many shut-offs.
Right, right, right. It's the turn-on situation.
When it's the turn-ons, if there is something that we can do to, you know, maybe provide cellphones for people in the field or something, but we'll talk on, to see if we can come up with a solution.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I got one too.
Yes, sir.
I received a phone call from the same gentleman again today as well, and it was, it was something to do with the leak abatement at that same place, uh, but like he stated, um, or he had continuous consumption is what he, he said, so they were coming over to check it. But like he stated to, to Mark, um, you know, calling 20 minutes ahead of time, you know, everybody has a cellphone on their pocket nowadays, or like he said, maybe a text message saying, hey, they'll be there 20, 30 minutes, instead of waiting around for five hours. So, and then.
So we would have to provide the cellphone services to the, the cellphones to our people. They can't use their personal phones, but we'll discuss that.
Okay. It's probably just a simple policy change or, or something on that, but, and then the second one is, uh, and I think I remember seeing an email from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald the other day over here on Washington Park behind Mountain View. Um, the, can't remember the lady's name over there, but Ms. Hibbins, um, had, had called me about four months ago about that issue, and it has still to this day not been addressed. Um, and she called me, I think, the day before yesterday, or on Monday, Monday afternoon, I had a phone call from her, and then I noticed the email from, from Commissioner McDonald. So if we could get that addressed, if, if the role was reversed and we told them to cut their weeds, and four months down the road, we would already have abated it and charged them for it, and leased their property, so.
So I know that weeds and drainage did go out there. One of the kind of issues we have is everybody in weeds and drains and streets are on streets right now, and we're looking to get an abatement contract. Jimmy's trying to get that RFP out there so that they can address these drainage channels because right now we're focusing on streets. So I will follow up to see where Jimmy's at on that abatement contract.
Yeah, I, I've actually had that same phone call and asked about that.
Three or four months.
I think that's what you, yeah, it has been. I have to say, it's been way too long. It needs to be cleaned up.
Yep.
Or a timeframe, so we don't look like we're lying to people or something, so.
Exactly.
Yeah. I agree. Okay. Is there anything else? Okay. Anybody here, the governor was here the other day? No? Yeah? Okay. Governor was here. Um, I mean, I guess I could just like pretend that didn't happen, but it did, and, uh, it was not as productive as I was hoping it would be. I think we got way off topic, and, um, I'm a little disappointed in that. I felt like, uh, some people were interviewing for something. I'm not really sure what yet, but I guess we'll hear about it eventually. Um, but, uh, it was an interesting discussion, for sure, um, and, uh, you really want to think about this mayor thing. I'm just throwing it out there to you. Thick skin, man. Thick skin, right? Um, thank goodness I have that. But anyway, uh, it, it was an, it was, as I said, not as, I'm a little disappointed because I was hoping we were going to have a, a different discussion, but whatever. Anyway, um, so, yeah, it, it, it is what it is.
Did it sound like she was trying to push gun control a little bit to you?
It sounded like she was trying to push gun control. It sounded like she was basically bashing our officers, yeah. That's what it sounded like to me.
I got the gun control.
I was super disappointed, and, um, I figure if, if everybody's entitled to our opinion, then we're not exempt, and that's just my opinion, so, um, and hopefully we can have a civil discussion about when we, um, present our opinions rather than the 10,000 comments that I'll probably see later, but whatever, and it, there's really not 10,000, and I think, I think really that's the point. I think, um, you know, we're not always going to agree on everything, but yes, I absolutely agree with you. I, I was really disappointed, to be honest with you, um, because I think that we have a tendency to definitely paint everybody with a broad brush, and, and it shouldn't be that way, but whatever. It is what it is, and, um, we asked her, she came, and, um, you know, it is what it is. And, um, I did get a lot of feedback that we have the best staff that they've ever had to work with, literally, that's what they told me, that they said normally they have to do, you know, all this stuff themselves, or they have to follow up, and they said literally everything was taken care of, they had to do nothing. And so that is a testament, testament to our city. Um, I think the welcome, uh, and I believe that was the Fire Department out there that welcomed her, I think that was incredibly gracious, and we should be proud of Alamogordo because, um, we have some phenomenal people that work in our city, we have some phenomenal people that protect us every day, and, um, I feel like even if we don't agree on everything, we are always gracious and welcoming to, to visitors, so.
Madam Mayor, we also have to acknowledge NMSUA because they provided the venue free of charge.
They did, yes.
And they provided the staff to set up and everything too.
Yes, and, and I'm sorry, you're right, absolutely. And obviously, that's not people I work with every day, so it's a little harder to remember that, but, but Ramona Becker and, um, her staff over there, they were, they were great. And, um, as we always do, every little detail, every little detail from the college, every little detail from our staff was, was thought of, and so thank you for that. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I will say that, um, I got an interesting phone call last night, and I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna tell you that I got a phone call last night, I was threatened, I was basically told that I was scum of the earth and that I hated homeless people, and, um, none of that is true. And then if I tell people that I work with the homeless every day, I'm told, stop giving us your resume and bragging on yourself. Well, I'm going to tell you that for 16 years, I've been working with the homeless and those less fortunate, and it is an incredibly huge part of my life, and it makes me sad that just because I'm the mayor, I'm not allowed to talk about something that I'm so incredibly passionate about. And I have sacrificed many hours and much time with my family to, um, make our organization a reality and to, to bring a vision, a vision that was cast by the Alamogordo Area Ministerial Alliance and many, many churches in this city, and to bring it to life. And I'm super disappointed that either I hate people, or I'm not allowed to talk about how I actually love people. And, um, and that's disappointing to me because we all have our views, and I understand that I'm elected to this position, I understand that we're all elected to this position, and I can tell you right now, we don't always agree, um, on everything, but we are all elected to this position. And what I will tell you is, no matter who you are, and no matter what you believe, there's going to be somebody on some side that if you think you're going to get up here and somebody's not going to bash you, or somebody's not going to disagree with you, you are 1,000% wrong, because it doesn't matter what you believe, we all believe differently. That's what makes our community so great. I remember when Officer Ferguson was killed, we didn't see, we didn't see, you know, I believe this, and I believe this, and I believe this. What we saw was a community come together. When Officer Corvino's was killed, we didn't see, I disagree with you on this, and I disagree with you on this. What we saw was a community where our streets were lined and we all came together. And for tho-, for that time, there wasn't all this hate and division, and I am so incredibly disappointed that we don't just have hate-filled people, but we have people that perpetuate that hate. And I can tell you right now that when this meeting is over tonight, and y'all get on social media, because I won't, there's going to be people that are going to say, oh, the mayor is self-righteous, and the mayor wants to lecture the rest of us. So really, it doesn't matter what I say, so I'm just sharing my feelings with you. And I will tell you right now, those are my feelings, and they're as real as everybody else's, and I have to do this every day too, and I, I'm, I'm here, and I think we're all here because we want to serve our community. So unless you've walked a mile in our shoes, and unless you've had to deal with what we've had to deal with, quite honestly, please don't judge us. Please don't, because you have no idea what it's like. And the other night at that town hall meeting, I felt such judgment that, man, I'm so disappointed. But at the same time, I'm proud of our city because we, we tried to do the best we could, and the purpose of that meeting was to bring people together so we could talk about the very change that, that was mentioned in this public comment tonight, and how we can work together. Um, but we can't work together when there's division like that, because I'm going to tell you right now, we just alienate each other. And as many times as one person hears, well, the community says this, the community says that, you have no idea what I hear, because it's completely opposite. So I, I'm sorry if that sounds like a lecture, that's not what I'm doing, I'm just sharing my heart. And so, um, like I said, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what I say, the comments are going to come, and that's okay. So I'm just going to share how I feel. So with that, if nobody else has anything, I would like to move on. Are we good? Okay. All right. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We're going to pull items four through seven from the consent agenda, Rachel. And with that, do I have a motion to approve item two, three, eight, nine, and 10?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson and Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. I'm so sorry about that. Mayor Pro Tem McDonald and Commissioner Robinson, second, and we've got the vote up. I say, Commissioner. Thank you, guys.
And we still need the mayor, Commissioner Burnett, and Commissioner Robinson.
I voted.
So did I. Says it's been casted.
I'm not showing it, so, um, what is your vote, Mayor?
Aye.
Commissioner Burnett?
Aye.
Did you see me click that?
Commissioner Ra-, uh, here.
Okay, and motion passes six, zero. Yeah, I definitely said yes. I don't know what happened. Sorry. Maybe I forgot to hit the save, but I don't, it wouldn't go away though until I either hit save or not, right? So I don't know what happened. Okay. All right, that's okay. All right. Um, so motion passes six, zero. We're going to move on to items pulled from the consent agenda. Um, do you want me to start with item four? It's probably going to be a pretty lengthy discussion, or should I do, uh, five, six, and seven first?
Only reason I wanted four pulled was so I could vote no, was.
Okay.
I was the only one that voted no on it last time, so.
Okay. All right. Um, so, item four. Uh, were you, Commissioner Riordan, you were the one that wanted it pulled?
Yeah, I just pulled it so I could vote no and, you know.
Okay. Does anybody else want to talk? I know Mayor Pro Tem McDonald had some.
Uh, yes. Today I attended the same meeting, uh, at 100% Otero, and there were some things that were brought up, and, uh, sometimes you, it's not like, uh, you don't want to have a, a change of heart, but, uh, when I was dealing with this the last time, I had something that happened in our neighborhood, and, uh, it was a no trespass. And, uh, when we were talking today, I saw something from a different side, uh, because I didn't realize that we were, uh, it was made, I was made aware that we are transferring the, um, liability from the city to the county, uh, because right now, um, we, I was told that the county cannot, uh, contain, uh, the number of people that can be picked up and put in the jail, and, um, they are being sued for it. So, um, I am not, uh, wanting to place, uh, one issue that the city had over to the county because it's still something that is happening. Uh, the other thing is that there's a $500 fine, and if, well, up to $500, uh, and six months in jail. And if we are aware, uh, most of these people are actually filtered to, through the jail. They, they may go in, but they're out the next day. And when you start applying fines to them, um, we are not going to get the money at all. So, uh, one of the things that, uh, I was looking, uh, at, and then the other part is being, uh, having six months in jail, which, uh, it, that is criminal to make somebody who is homeless, uh, stay in, um, prison for six months. And then, of course, um, the other issue is that when people are out on the, on the street, um, it's saying that they can't stay on private, um, property or a place where there's no, uh, place to get rid of your sewage, and so that's, um, a bathroom, uh, issue, and everybody has it, whether you're, uh, in a home or you're homeless. So I, uh, wanted to rethink it and, uh, just kind of see if we could have, uh, more of an open dialogue on what we're passing here.
Absolutely.
So that, um, we can get all of the facts and not, uh, transfer an issue from the city to the county, uh, and then produce more, uh, libel suits, uh, against the county. And also, uh, when I talked to, um, some of the people, they said, we do have the, um, the City Mobile Crisis Unit, and a lot of these people, and I think in the contract they are, the police are supposed to refer, uh, them so that, uh, you know, we can have at least, um, whatever the crisis unit can actually do for the people who are in these situations, um, maybe give them an opportunity to not, uh, go, uh, and have more trauma in their life, uh, because they are dealing with a homeless issue. So I, um, I'm not saying that I don't want some rules, but I am saying that, uh, I don't want the homeless criminalized, and I don't think it's fair to, uh, assess somebody with, uh, a fine that they are unable to pay, and then the more they go, the fines go up, and maybe the, um, the, the crime that, uh, they're being charged with will have more time. So that's, that's what I'm looking at, is just asking us to, uh, actually have a conversation so that we can look at all aspects of what this, uh, is actually, uh, doing for our city and, uh, make a better judgment.
Okay. So did they come up with an alternative solution? Was there an alternative? Was there, I, I would like to hear an alternative solution.
Well, the alternative that they're looking at is, uh, making, uh, places available for the people to go.
Right. So I, I will, okay. And a couple of things, and I, again, I'm not, I'm not heartless. I don't care what anybody says, I am not heartless. I, I do work with, I could probably tell you the names of a lot of people that are unhoused out now and on our streets, because I, I have worked with them. However, um, I'm not, and I, and I understand the housing sector meets every month, and they've been doing this now for maybe two, three years, something like that, maybe longer? I'm, I'm not sure. 100% Otero's been around for a while now. I don't know how long, but.
Five years.
Five years, okay. So for five years, the housing sector has been meeting for five years, um, and we don't have any solutions yet, and I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about that, and I'm not saying they're not working on it, because I think they do great work, I acknowledge it, but after five years, there's still no solution. Um, I, I would like to, before we move further, um, I do have our, um, Fire Chief here and, um, Lieutenant, Lieutenant, I, sorry, I'm sorry. I know who you are, I just, your title, sorry. Lieutenant Skaggs, I really would like to hear from both of them, if you don't mind coming up. Um, I know they have some stats for us, so.
Good evening, Mayor. We are Pro Tem Properties. The manager, commission, and citizen.
I can't hear you, sorry.
Sorry about that. How's that, is that better? Louder? Commissioners and citizens of Alamogordo. We, Lieutenant Skaggs here, um, actually ran some stats here last week on just the incidences that we've had pertaining just to the Fire Department alone, so I'll go ahead and let him go over these. He actually went into the archive systems table to find these and actually run documented back. Now, this only goes back to the year of 24, beginning of 24, to present.
Okay. Madam Mayor, before, uh, the- Madam Mayor, before Lieutenant starts, I just want to say that this, I asked Chief and Chief Givitt to Lieutenant to put this together, because there's another side of
this, it's not just the criminal aspect, the trespassing. And I think people forget that there's the fire side of it, and it's causing some frustration for our fire staff as well. So I asked so that I can better understand, and so that's why this came in. I thought it was good information to provide to the commission.
No, and I think, you know, you asked for dialogue. This is the time to do it. And so I think it's good that we get all the information we can, because there has to be a solution. And, and I don't disagree with you about the fines. You're right, they're not going to be able to pay them. On the other hand, I think the flip side of that is, I'm not sure how often that's actually, I know that it can happen, but the same thing can happen with a lot of our, a lot of our criminal ordinances. It's, it's, I don't want to say it's standard, but it really is almost standard in a lot of them, and it's not often that we actually see them. But go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Commission. Lieutenant Williams Skaggs. So I looked at the time period of November 1st, 2023, to January 3rd, 2025. And I will tell you guys, since January 3rd, we've had approximately four to five additional incidents with homeless and fires, since I put this report together. During this period, my investigations unit involved, investigated multiple fires that were appeared or directly caused by homeless encampments or homeless individuals. During this time period, I linked 45 incidents. So from November 1st, 2023, to January 3rd, 2025, I linked 45 incidents that Alamo Gordo Fire Department responded to. And when we respond to these incidents, we're not only moving through our community with haste, we have our lights and sirens on because we're not sure what's going on, we're not only putting ourselves in harm's way, but we're putting the community in harm's way as well, we are responding to these incidents. During this, this incident count, the common causes of these, most of them have been linked to homeless individuals unsafely trying to cook or stay warm. So we sympathize with these individuals. They're trying to stay warm, they're trying to cook food, but the problem is, is they're not doing it safely, because they don't have the resources or the aspects to do it, and a lot of them don't understand that it's not safe for them to be doing it. Eleven of these fires were deliberate acts of arson. So 11 of the 45 were deliberate acts caused by homeless individuals within our community. A portion of our homeless community, a lot of them, I deal with them day in, day out. We work with the organizations that are here, we work with the CIT, the Crisis Intervention Team. A lot of them just need help, but some of them refuse help, and there was 11 different incidents that were intentional acts by these individuals. We identified some risk areas. Several of these incidents have occurred in high-risk locations, including vacant houses, which we work with code enforcement on the Dilapidated Structure Program. We have vacant commercial buildings, and a lot of them are happening on rural city-owned property. It's our own property that we are having these incidents on. The severity of them, these fires have resulted in high-dollar losses to vacant properties, endangered our community's safety and the safety of our emergency responders. A lot of these incidents are in the vacant houses, so these are causing monetary losses to our community members, and then it's putting everybody else's property in danger. Hostile interactions with the homeless. I know everybody talks about how APD has to interact with the, with the homeless and the hostile interactions, but our fire department is also having to deal with hostile interactions with the homeless. A lot of times when we're responding to these calls, APD is busy on the bigger calls, and they're not available to assist us. So our personnel are actually having to deal with the hostile interactions of the homeless individuals here in Alamo Gordo. I picked three incidents that I'd like to bring up, because I believe they're a cause of concern. So we have had multiple fires at 516 East First Street, which is behind the strip mall there, Discount Tire between Granada. Between November 18th and 19th, 2024, we responded five times to this address in reference to a dumpster fire and trash fire in the alleyway. All the fire incidents were linked to conflicts between the homeless individuals who frequent the area. So a lot of these fires that are we dealing with are issues between the homeless where they're burning each other's stuff, or burning areas so people can't stay there. It's awful, if you would refer to the, the gang side of things, it's like a turf war. The homeless have a turf war going on, and they're burning each other's stuff. Homeless campfire on 12/7, 2024. On 12/7, 2024, fire, fire personnel responded to an unknown fire west of the tracks, between the tracks and the bypass. Upon arrival, which I was the first unit on scene, I was confronted by a homeless individual who openly admitted he started the homeless camp on fire. This individual threatened me with a knife, and then when APD got on scene, he resisted arrest and had to be forcibly taken into custody. This is what our fire personnel are dealing with every single day. So when we say that APD's dealing with bigger crimes, these homeless fires are becoming bigger crimes, and it's threatening our personnel. And then the attempted arson of the vacant allsops. On 12/28, 2024, fire personnel responded to 2,200 North White Sands Boulevard in reference to a fire against the building. The reporting party described a homeless man as starting the fire. Upon arrival, fire personnel discovered a passerby extinguished the fire. The investigator concluded that this was an act of arson, and it was an attempt to burn the building down. The selfless act by a bystander kept the fire from spreading. We got lucky on this one. Luckily, one of our citizens stopped and put the fire out. If not, the vacant allsops there, and also Indian Wells and White Sands would have been up in flames by an act of arson from one of our homeless members. I have ongoing investigations. I'm collaborating with, collaborating with our local law enforcement and entities outside of the city to try to come up with solutions, but we have not. I've been working in the investigations unit since 2018 is when we started it, and we have not come up with a solution to fix this. And it just keeps growing more and more and more. And a lot of these homeless individuals that we see and that we deal with are not our local ones, the ones that are here, they're ones traveling through. So they come through and they create problems within our city, and then they leave and we don't see them again. Or we'll get one of them a place to stay, or unfortunately, they go to OCDC, and our fires stop. And then as soon as they're released, our fires start up again. So it's a problem, and I don't have a solution for it. I just know that we have, we have to do something. And the biggest issue is that we don't have a way to enforce this. So when we go out there, we don't have a way to do anything. We have what's called officer discretion. I have the same thing as APD does. I don't charge crimes. I recommend charges to APD. I have the same officer discretion. So when we go out and we deal with these individuals, and we see somebody that is merely trying to stay warm, or trying to use heat to cook, we don't necessarily have to cite them. We can educate them, we do provide resources for them. I make multiple phone calls in the middle of the night to the different organizations to try to find them a place to go. But the ones that become a problem when we just go back and back and back, where they're on the private property, we don't have any way to go in there and mitigate that problem. That's why myself is in support of an ordinance to where we can, because right now, I don't have any grounds to go onto somebody's private property and tell them that, hey, this person can't be staying there. But I'll reiterate, and I know it's been told, I have the same frustrations. We go to a vacant house, and somebody's doing something safe, unsafe inside, if we can't find the owner, we can't do anything. Even though that it's unsafe, I know that we're going to be back, and there's been multiple instances to where we go to a vacant house, somebody's squatting in it, they're having a fire inside, we tell them they can't do that, and then we're back a couple days later for a full-blown structure fire, because we have no way to enforce it. I reach out, I try to find the owners, but I have the same frustration that APD and code enforcement does. We can't reach these owners, and we have no way. So that's why we support the ordinance, to say that we need to be able to do something. But I want you guys to understand, we do sympathize with these individuals. We do everything we can for them to provide them resources. I buy mills multiple times. My wife taught me that. So there's times we'll go out there, I'll take these guys' mills, I'll take these individuals' mills just to try to make sure that they're taken care of. So we are sympathizing with them, but these fires are concerning, and it's putting our community and our personnel at risk.
Thank you. Thank you.
One, actually, one mentioned, Mayor, was the abandoned hotel right across from Big O Tires. That one, actually, they tried to set that one on fire. We were able to get ahold of the business owner, the property owner, and they were actually to board it up. But over the weeks have passed, you can actually see where they're starting to get back into that again.
And that is the one, is that the one that I talked about that's next door? That's, it used to be, what was it called? The Ace? Or no, what was that hotel? You know the one on White Sands?
Oh, the town's been a long, long time ago.
Yeah. Whatever it was called, it's, it's obviously boarded up now.
Up on an auction site right now.
Yeah, the building next door to it, I think it was a machine shop at one time. And that building was broken into multiple times. The last time they broke into it, they used a sledgehammer and broke through the cinder block, and crawled in a hole, and got in there. And, and then they would run, they would run, and they would run to that hotel next door. And so, and I, I got multiple calls from this person, and it, it's frustrating, because I, I agree with you. I, I do have compassion. I have, I have individuals that I know are homeless. I have one lady that comes every week for food, she comes every week for food, and she said the reason she comes to us is because where she's sleeping, she doesn't have to leave her stuff very long, because she knows if she leaves her stuff very long, someone's going to steal it. And so we just give her food. It's fine, you know, it's, it's not that big of a deal. And, and so we, and the only reason I tell that story is we understand the dynamics. I understand the dynamics. I do understand. I will tell you, and I'm not trying to call anybody out, but I am going to tell you about this incident, because I'm a little frustrated. We had, I had a situation before Christmas at our building on, and we're on Ohio, where a lady refused to leave, and the, we only had two staff members there at the time, I was actually holding a staff Christmas party somewhere else, and it was waiting on these two staff members, and one of them called me and said, I think this lady is going to hit, and it was my secretary at the time. And I just panicked, and I jumped in the car with my husband, and we were flying down 10th Street, hoping that one of our officers didn't pull me over. But we did call the police. They met us there, and by the time I got there, I'm standing in my office, and I can hear her screaming at our officers in the next room, and I, obviously, I don't want to go in there, because I don't want to escalate it. This same lady was in City Hall. Several days before that, she refused to leave. She was harassing our receptionist and demanding that, that she, I don't know what, go to Starbucks or something and get her the free water or something, and all of these other things, and, and, but anyway, so she ended up at our building, and I thought the officers were going to have to arrest her, and I was terrified. My, my assistant was just shook up. She was, she was, she was pretty shook up at this incident. And the only thing that they could do is, I had two choices. They said, well, we could take her to jail, or we could just trespass her. Well, I didn't want her to go to jail, it was just before Christmas, so we trespassed her, because we had to. And to trespass her, we sit her on the sidewalk. That, that, that was trespassing. I bring that up, because the officer that was there told me that, that was the fourth time he had to trespass her this week. And I asked, where's our CIT team? Like, where the, and I'm, again, Chief, I am not trying to call anybody out, but I will tell you, I was very frustrated. And, and they, the officer told me, well, I did send a message or whatever, and, and I never heard back. And I said, well, you can tell them that I'm asking now, because this lady, and it's not that I didn't care about her, it's that I actually did care about her, and I hated leaving her on the sidewalk with all her stuff. I hated it. I didn't like it, not just because we had to leave her there, but because she had clearly some mental health issues that needed to be addressed. And as you said, we have no recourse at all. And so, you know, I think it's more inhumane to just not do anything at all. I, I am open to solutions. I am. But I, I'm not hearing any, I'm not hearing any viable solutions. I think, I think there has to be a better way. The other night at the town hall meeting, a homeless shelter was mentioned. Well, I know, and we know from our pit counts, we do, for those of you who don't know, there's a pit count done every year, and on a particular day in, it's usually January, there's a group of volunteers that goes around and, and actually interviews those that are unsheltered, and as many as they can. And so we know from that, that it's probably, you know, and I, I asked the other night, but I'm thinking less than 100 that are unsheltered. And I'm trying to understand in my mind, and, you know, maybe I'm thinking wrong, but I'm trying to understand, to run a shelter, to run a homeless shelter properly, is probably a million dollars a year. If you're going to do it properly, if you're going to have the mental health professionals and addiction counselors and, and staff that can help with, you know, birth certificates and IDs and all these other things to do, and, and the liability insurance is outrageous, and, and all of these other things, and if you're going to do it, it's about a million dollars a year. Well, I'm trying to understand in my mind, or process, how, how you justify a million-dollar-a-year program for less than 100 people. And so, and I'm not saying they're not worth it, I'm just saying, look at your own household budget. Is that what you spend per person on your own household budget? Because I, I'm, I'm trying to justify it, and, and I can't, in my mind, justify that. And, but, on the flip side of that, there are no great solutions. There just aren't. And, and it is really tough when you have to put somebody on a sidewalk with whatever belongings they had. But she was dangerous, and she almost assaulted one of my staff members, and I can't have that either. And so, while I have all the compassion in the world, I'm not sure what the flip side of that. We have a, a maintenance guy that, that the house next door to us is owned by, he's the owner of a funeral home in town, and he, his mother owns a house next door to us. And so between the two, he has a maintenance guy, and so the maintenance guy came, and he's very nice, and he always trims the side of our building and all that. And I saw him the other day, and he said, I want to show you something, and he shows me a picture, and there's like 30 hypodermic needles on the side of our building. And that is terrifying to me. I mean, that's a lot. That's a lot. And I will tell you that it wasn't that long ago that he cleaned that place up, and it was before the first of the year. And do I know where they came from? No, I can't tell you where they came from, but I can tell you that I'm now having to install more cameras on the sides of our building. I have cameras in the front, and I, and I have to install cameras on the side of our building, because I need to know what's going on. I can't have people, you know, hypodermic needle, leaving hypodermic needles on, on the side of my building. And I'm, these are facts. These are not, this is not me making it up, I'm not trying to insult anybody, I'm not trying to, to, you know, call people out. These are facts. This is exactly what's happening. And I would like to know the flip side of this. If they're camping in our parks, if they're, if they're, if they're hanging out, and I have people calling me, and I do all the time, telling me they're not comfortable bringing their kids to our parks, what is the solution? Because I haven't heard any great solutions. I have.
Mayor, on this, I am not asking for this, the resolution to be passed tonight. I'm just asking, because.
That we revisit the fine.
Just revisit it. I said, because.
Can I understand that?
I mean, I think I'm one of the ones who brought up the fires in the 5th District in condemned houses. But I think the only thing that I am asking, and that I would like to make sure, as far, you know, as our money situation here, because we're trying to move forward. And if we could get a resolution that could at least satisfy everybody, at least to whatever degree it is, to go ahead and do that, I said, because I, I am opposed to the fires being started in the, in every, in the whole town. And I'm also, you know, just looking at the fact that you want to treat people fairly. You, you want to be fair about how you're looking at it. And the only thing that I'm asking as a result, like I said, I am a commissioner, and when people bring things to me, whether it's comfortable for me to talk about it or not, I want to bring it forward, because I think, you know, I'm supposed to be a voice, and so I'm being the voice. So I'm just telling you that tonight, the concerns that people had, and the fact that they just wanted to have more of an open dialogue. So nothing, you know.
Which is what I hope we're doing right now.
So, and I told them that I'm only one vote, and I said, whatever, you know, is going to be determined, they have, they have me saying what they told me, and I wrote it down.
So did they give you an alternative to that?
And I think I said that earlier. I said, no.
I think our city attorney has.
So.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, one of the things I do want to, I guess, bring to your attention that might help, because I know, like, your, one of your concerns is about the, any possible fines. So we do allow for community service in lieu of fines. We do that quite often. We do that for, for really anyone who gets a fine with the municipal court. My office, we never oppose it, and the judge wouldn't, honestly, probably wouldn't necessarily let us oppose it. And I think it's quite a bit of money. Like, I want to say almost about $20 an hour that we do for each community service, and I might be off on that. But I know it is quite a bit. For each hour of community service you do, we will put that towards your fines. And that's open for anyone, for any ki, any kind of fines. You know, if someone. You know, if someone comes in and can't pay a speeding ticket, you know, we've done that.
Okay, so let me ask you this. We can't, and, and I don't know, so I'm just asking, we can't put that in an ordinance in lieu of a fine? We can't require that in lieu of a fine or no?
So that's judicial discretion, but I can tell you that it is standard practice that always, they always do that.
But we can't, we can't say if-
So we can't require, we can't require-
We can't require it.
Community service. It's, it can be, it's an option, but-
See, I feel like something like that might be better. Because I think, you know, if you're, if you're on this, let's face it, if you're on the streets long enough, and, and I have to tell my staff this all the time too, because they get, people come in and they're angry and they're frustrated and I tell them all the time, "Don't take it personally. You're talking to people that have been living on the street. They're frustrated, they're angry, they don't like their circumstances, but they don't know how to get out of their circumstances." And I feel like a program like that, like an alternative program, like community service, actually, they may feel really good about themselves knowing that, because I believe they're capable. I believe they're capable. I believe that there is no reason to think that they're not capable of, you know, working in our parks or something like that. And, and I, and I've actually expressed that before, that, that we, we, that's what we need, is we need people to understand that they're capable of doing more. And, and so, you know, gosh, I wish we could do something like that.
And Mayor, I will say, when we do sentencings, because what you're talking about is like if we go to a sentencing, when we're, we can tell, you know, when someone's homeless, I can't send discovery, you know, we, we all know it. And so that is something that we always suggest. It's something that the judge, even when he's doing sentencing, will tell them. Like if you cannot afford these fines, we can, you can, we can do a payment plan or if you can't even, you can't do a payment plan, we can also do community service. And you just have to, it's a paper, you can, the court has community services that, you know, are kind of like sanctioned, or not sanctioned, but like programs that they know of and they can, you know, say like, "These are ones that people have done in the past." You know, they can go to the animal shelter, you know, different things. Or they can go to the, so I've had several people that go to some of the churches and the pastors will just sign off when they've done the community service.
We, we take people for community service all the time.
It is something that we, we do. It is a standard practice in the prosecution. And so I just wanted to make you all aware that there is that program.
How many?
The judge will do a fine, will set a fine, but that's because we have to have a way to track it, right? And then as you earn, you know, you do the community service-
So it's based on the hours?
Yes.
Right.
We did, we start deducting it.
How many people actually take you up on that? What do you think?
Oh, I would have to ask the judge or the courts to-
I mean, do you think you see it a lot or?
Um, I don't know, because once they're sentenced, like I don't really have much to do with it unless they, I get a failure to pay.
Okay.
But then I always tell them like, "Do community service, like that's what I'm gonna recommend, you know, recommend." You know, I've been in there and I've had people see, I've seen people come in with their sheets and stuff like that, but I really couldn't give you even a rough estimate.
Okay.
I had some comments on that. Being in the industry I'm in, kind of along with Mayor Protem McDonald with, with the fines and even the community service, it doesn't work. You know, that's, just added it up, twenty dollars an hour, five hundred dollar fine, that's twenty-five hours of community service. They'll go work an hour or two, then they won't be able to find them, they don't show up, then they get a failure to appear, failure to pay, and they're in the system and it's just a revolving door. It doesn't, I mean, it works for some people, but it doesn't work for others. But on this, it seems like we've got quite a bit of discussion and it seems like there's quite a few people in the, sorry, my ear went ringing, that there's quite a few people that, that wanted to make comments or, or contributions to the ordinance. I for one have a, an issue with the private property and the city being able to tell somebody to leave private property. That's, we don't have that authority really. And I would like to just table this and that would give-
Can I make a comment, just real quick?
Hang on, just say, almost done. And then that would give the public time, you know, we bring it back in thirty days, the hundred percent Otero people and Miss, I'm not sure what your name is, but, you know, they can get their comments together and bring them back to us and let's re-tweak it to where it works for everybody. That's kind of how I've wanted to look at it. That was the main issue I had was the, was the, the current ordinance we have on the books addresses camping on the right of way. And, and it's illegal and, and if they're causing a problem, then let's remove them. But the, on the, on the private property, the city really needs to be careful with that because, you know, what if, what if we go in there, remove them and injure them and then we're involved in a lawsuit or, or something along those lines, you know?
So you don't, you don't think that if they're in their, like the, well, the two gentlemen that just left, or if they're in an abandoned house, which is technically private property?
It is, but it's, you know, and, and I see their side of this.
That's a criminal offense.
That's a criminal, yes, as well.
Right, that's, that's-
And same thing with-
A little bit different.
With the parks, you know, we already, we already have ordinances, if they're camping in the park, they can be removed, you know? And, and like I say, these guys' issue is, is difficult because, you know, here in about another month or two, when it starts warming up, a lot of that's probably gonna go away for about eight or nine months and then it'll start again come September, October of next, of this year. You know, it, it's just the time of year. And we're getting a lot of the drifters through here because our climate's not as cold, so they come from other communities where it's colder and they come here because it's warmer in the evenings. You know, you can't tell me it's not warmer here than it is in Albuquerque.
No, it is. I agree. One thousand percent, I agree.
You know, and, and I don't know the answer to it. I don't think any of us do. We're just gonna have to do the best we can, so.
Yeah, I, I-
I personally would like to call a question on this and make a motion to table it and that'll give-
Okay, but I have one more thing to say. I think that my frustration is that we, we still have no solutions and we can, we can have the public comment and that's fine. But if, if, if our thought is, "Well, it'll warm up and then they'll go away," well, that's not really a solution. And so, because it'll get cold again and then they'll be back and then it'll warm up and they'll go away. So, so I think, you know, as you talked about with the fines, and I understand what you're saying, I do, I, you're, you're not wrong. You're right. But if we're gonna talk about overtaxing our jail, let's talk about overtaxing our, our public safety officials too. And it's the, even if it's just during the winter, we're still overtaxing and we're still putting them in harm's way. And I, I feel like we keep ignoring what was just said and I would be devastated if, I keep going back to, is it Jonah Hernandez, who showed up to a call for a trespass in Las Cruces and was met by a homeless man with a knife who killed him. And so he went to work that day and never came home. And all he did, and, and if you watch that video, all he said is, "Oh, are you the one that called?" And the guy attacked him and he killed him. And, and so as a result, we lost a law enforcement officer for nothing more than doing his job. And so, you know, that's fine, we can wait thirty days, but we need to come up with a solution. Because if we lose a fireman or if we lose another officer because we decided that someone else's life was more important than their life, and whether we are saying that or not, that's kind of what we're doing when we don't address the issue, then I gotta tell you, I'm gonna be pretty vocal about it. So, so that's fine. If you want to table it thirty days, whatever you guys want to do is fine with me, but we do need to be thinking about a solution in the next thirty days.
It just gives the public time to provide input.
And that's fine. That's fine. I have no problem with that.
I have a comment when you get done talking.
Go ahead, I'm, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Who are you gonna always have with you? Very compassionate, very spot on, but you're always gonna have this problem. And one hundred percent Otero and their housing committee and several individuals in this community are working on it. It's difficult. There is no simple solution. But give the public another thirty days to do this. I, I would agree. There are compassionate people who are looking for, for help for the homeless. You guys got a thankless job. We realize that. And he's right, when it warms up, many of these people will go away. But in the meantime, let's not just criminalize them and not just put them in a situation where it's not gonna get any better. I would agree to go for thirty days to let the citizenry have some more input. People are working on things. For some of you know, they're working on this in Las Cruces and they got something that's amenable to the city and to people. It's not an easy question. It's not. It's very, very difficult. But Commissioner, I would go along with you. Let's let the public have another thirty days for input. And after thirty days, if there's no solution, I would vote for this.
Okay.
It's just, it's a difficult thing. It's not simple.
I completely agree.
It's not simple. If you could solve it, it would have been solved a long time ago. What you can do is you can have some remediation. You can have something that you can help until the weather gets warmer. But the homeless are not gonna go away. You think it's just here? It's everywhere. It's everywhere.
Yeah. And I, and I would say ours is relatively low compared to other places.
Yes.
Las Cruces is-
Yes.
Yeah, there's a whole group that I follow-
Yeah.
-in Las Cruces and the pictures that I see are just, they're outrageous. And that's with several homeless shelters in Las Cruces and the pictures are just, you know, be glad we're in Alamogordo. That's all I can say. I, I don't have any problem tabling it for thirty days. I said that. I, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But I, I would hope we would all be thinking of some solutions.
Can I ask, what does the comments look like? Because we have, I mean, this ordinance wasn't put together because we just felt like it. There's been a lot of, we've pulled out of state ordinances, in-state ordinances. It's not something that was just thrown together. There, there is initiatives where you, like the homeless shelters you put, and there's other types of initiatives such as this one. So what do the comments look like? Do they come to you or do you want, like, I don't know how this looks because we've been working on this for two years and it's only getting worse. And so I don't know, I, I completely feel compassionate for everything, but I also feel very frustrated because our, our fire and our police are dealing with this and we, nobody's providing any solutions. They're just condemning us and I don't know what those comments look like. I don't know how to incorporate a solution that fixes it for everybody.
Well, and my concern with the comments is that if somebody comes and disagrees with somebody else, is someone gonna get angry? Because if they are, then it's pointless. We have to be able to listen, you know, I, I understand that, you know, one group may be more vocal than another, but it doesn't mean I don't get the phone calls and the text messages and, you know what I mean? And so, so we have to either listen to other people's point of view and respect it, or I'm not gonna sit here and listen to comments. It's one or the other. Either we're respectful of each other and understand that we have differences and differences of opinion when it comes to this, or it's not, it's just not gonna work. And I, I agree with you. This has been going on way too long and you're right, it is getting much, much worse.
How about we just, on the next agenda, we put an item on here, basically just allowing the constituents in the, that had an issue with it to come to the meeting and provide their, their input on the ordinance. And then we can take those comments, redraft or do whatever we need to do and have it in thirty days. And, and that gives them the opportunity, if they show up, cool. If they don't, then hey, there was your opportunity. You know, I don't, I don't know who it was, I wasn't at the meeting, but I have seen a lot on Facebook and, and some various people talking about it, that, that they're concerned with it, you know? The, the way I look at it is they're still human beings that are out there, you know, and they're down on their luck, you know? Do we really want to kick them while they're down and throw them in jail or fine them five hundred dollars? That's kind of the way I see it.
I really like the community service idea, actually.
If, it's a good idea, but like I say, I don't know if it would work because a lot of times they have mental health issues, they may show up for an hour and then you'll never be able to find them again, so. But that's how-
I think that's fair. We can put an item on or a workshop or something.
Like a workshop or a presentation. Because, you know, say we give them the opportunity to, to voice their concerns, if they show up and give us their concerns, then we can put those in the ordinance. And if they don't, then we just pass it how it is.
Okay.
I just have one thing, real, real fast.
Yes.
The, the only comments I have, the rebuttal I had from my constituents, people calling me on this, was pretty much the private property deal. I don't know if we can reword this to, you know, we made two efforts to call the people and they're not responsive, then we remove them or something along that line. But-
Okay.
Just, just because they're on private property, we need, just need to have a little buffer zone there to, to, to be able to remove them.
Yeah, I think-
That's, that seems to be the, what I've been getting flack about.
I think that's a fair comment too. So if we are unable to reach the property owner after certain attempts, then we, the ordinance kicks in?
Absolutely.
Gotcha.
Makes sense.
All right, so we're gonna table this?
Do I need to restate my motion? Just, do we want to table it at a timeframe or, you want thirty days on there or?
Thirty days.
The first meeting in November or?
You can table it and then we can bring it back when-
Just bring it back when you're ready. Okay, I'll just make a motion and we table item four.
Okay, but can we not forget about it?
We won't.
Okay.
Thirty days, we'll take the vote.
I just want to make-
I just tabled it. That way Stephanie's forty-five days they have it.
Okay. So I have a motion from Commissioner Ruden to table item four. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Tapley? Can we put up the vote, please? Okay, I hit yes and I hit save. There we go. Okay, I must have done something wrong last time. All right, motion passes six to zero. And we're gonna move on to item five, which was also pulled from the consent agenda. And I, I'm not sure who pulled it. Was it you or Commissioner Burman?
I had a question, I think.
Commissioner Ruden.
I had a question too, I don't know. Speak slow. Okay. I just, how did we not know we had a ten-inch reclaimed water line right there in that middle of the project?
No, so we did know that there was a ten-inch. But the problem is, is back in nineteen ninety-six, the plans show that it was supposed to be six feet deep and it was not. It was less than three foot.
Okay.
Not to mention, it was encased, connected to the footing and also to the sidewall of the culvert box.
Of that bridge?
Yeah. So because it is a reclaimed water line, it's a, it's a big one. It basically covers the whole entire Oregon parks, all the way down to Indian Wells. So if for some reason we fix this little tiny break and it breaks again, now we have bigger issues because now it's under the culvert box, which is the box that they're fixing, on top of the asphalt that they're repaving on top of it. And you know, with our, with our specs and everything saying that we can dig into the asphalt for five years, once it's placed in, it's gonna cause a lot of issues if it were to break later down the line or if it breaks on the north side, because we still haven't reached the north side yet. So my proposal was to basically change it to where it's going on the west side of the bridge completely, to where it's not touching the culvert box at all. And I spoke to a few of the utility maintenance crews. They all feel the same way to where, you know, if it does break, it's easier for them to access it that way compared to breaking concrete under the box and trying to fix something that's encased.
So this is currently under that bridge?
It's-
Or is it in the side of the, of the hill?
It's all. It's, so the footing, the culvert box, all of it's connected with the same concrete. There's no, there's nothing separate. Everything's all combined into one.
Gotcha.
And it was not supposed to be built that way back in ninety-six. So I'm trying to address this now that we saw it, that how shallow it was from the bottom of the ditch. Because even if they go and try to clean the ditches out and they get a skister and they're like, they see the plan saying, oh, it's six feet deep from the bottom of the ditch, they shouldn't have an issue, but it's not. It's only like, it's about two and a half feet, so.
It used to be six foot deep until a former engineer went in and cleaned that ditch out and he excavated it way, way down.
Yeah, so on the plans that I put on the agenda, it does show that the new line is supposed to be six feet deep and it wasn't, so. I'm just trying to basically get this out of the Culver Box area so that way we don't have issues in the future like I'm having an issue now. I'm doing the same thing with other projects, so.
Being proactive, what a concept.
So there was a plan in here that showed where it was or?
Yeah, I put it as an image on the agenda. It should have been on there. It's not on there? I saw it on my side. I don't know.
Well, I saw it because it was in my folder. And just exactly what you said is what they're doing.
I don't see it, but it...
Yeah, it's, but our computers have been slow.
Okay.
Is it on the agenda report?
Yeah, yes, it is. I put that as well as the proposal, the quote.
Yeah, it's not on here, but so.
And I do want to let you know that in the bidding, there was a bid item that was number twenty-three, which is allowance for utility conflict. They bid on $20,000 on that during the bidding process because they did do some of the damage, but it's not all the way their fault. They said that they will put that full twenty into what they proposed, which was a sixty-three. So that's why I put $43,000 on the schedule, on the agenda itself.
That's all I had?
That's it.
Do you have any questions?
No, I didn't.
Questions? Okay. So do I have a motion to approve item five?
So move.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? Okay. Motion passes six zero. And I just looked up and saw former Commissioner Jason Baldwin in the audience. Welcome. It's a little weird seeing you out there, but whatever. There's an empty seat here in case you're wondering. Wrong district, sorry.
It's your old chair, too, Jason.
I know, right? It happens to be your old, okay, fine. But welcome. I, I didn't see you. I'm sorry. But it's good to see you, Jason. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item six. That was pulled from the consent agenda. Again, I don't know if it was Commissioner Burnett or Commissioner Riden.
Oh, I just, I just have just a couple of questions. But the two gentlemen kind of answered the questions. There was just nothing on there saying that structurally wise that something was wrong when I was looking at the report, so that's why I had questions.
Other than some foundation issues from a water leak, the interior was bad enough that I couldn't do a lot of that inspection, so from the inside. Outside, there was a water break that has led to foundation issues.
Yeah, the two gentlemen, they kind of...
Is there anybody trying to live in that house right now? See, I think that's the travesty. I'm sorry, but I think that's more inhumane than anything.
Is it somebody that's supposed to be living there or is it squatters?
Yeah, it was a family member. It's a family member that's living there and allowing others to be there. And there have been children there.
I'll just make a motion to approve item...
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett to approve item six. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item seven was pulled from the consent agenda. Again, I don't know which one of you...
It was me.
Oh, okay. I had one person tell me to pull all of these, so...
You can blame Tapley, Grant, for that one.
Gotcha. All right. Commissioner Tapley.
Okay, so I don't know. I'm going to apologize. I tried to open this at my office and couldn't open it and I still cannot open.
The recommendation?
Well...
The only thing we have is just the bid.
I just have a number.
That's it.
Yeah, this is the recommendation from the architect.
Yeah, that's all we have.
Yeah, that's, there was only one bid. So I still had him write a recommendation on that one just because last time when I had the other kind of forms on there, it seemed like you guys were a little bit confused on what I was doing on there. So I just wanted to go back to the recommendation letters and keep it consistent with you guys.
So what was the original amount that was budgeted for this?
The EOPC, like what the architect expected to be? Three point two million dollars.
And that's what was budgeted?
No.
Do the project?
No. Show help me with the financial part of it on the budget part.
So originally, before the bid opening, we had $2.1 million total that we had allocated to the project. After the bid opening, when it was clear that it was going to fall short of that, we were able to request some more money from the state. And so from the Governor's Fund, we were able to receive another $505,000. So the total money that we currently have for this project is $2,612,966.
So two point six?
Two point six.
So I guess the other question is, with the leftover three hundred, say thousand, what are we allowed to do with that?
Well, it won't be left over because the 2.3 million does not include taxes. So we're talking, I mean, we have a very thin margin. We are living on the edge in terms of if we find unknown conditions that are going to require something else.
Is this all grant money every day?
So there are four legislative allocations, $450,000 in local money and $505,250 from the Governor's Fund.
Where's the 450 coming out of? What fund?
General Fund.
Oh, it's coming out of Fund Eleven?
Yes.
Is it just a match for all the grants or?
Yeah, so when we went to the legislative session this, this past one, we went with an ask of, we basically, at that point, based on the EOPC, thought we were going to need 1.1 million to finish it. So we went in with that ask and we received feedback from the legislature that they wanted to, to see some local money in there. And so we had pledged $400,000 when we put that application on there. And then the additional $50,000 came when we, we saw the bid and saw that we needed to just give us a little bit. Like I said, it's a razor sharp margin, but give us a little bit more of a cushion.
I just wanted to comment. I know that we have a couple of them coming up, but I saw that nine and 10 were part of that, too, on this agenda. Is that correct? The 505?
That, that is correct.
And the 695.
Yes, that is correct. So the 600, so when we went and we requested the entire amount from the legislature, the legislators that were working with us, one of them had 350,000, so they put that in. And then three legislatures combined together to use the additional funding that they had left to come up with the six point, or the 695,000. So you all had already approved the $350,000 as part of the ICIP. So the two that you voted on the consent agenda, the $505,000 is what came from the Governor's Office and the 695 was a new contract that was the three legislatures going together. So that was something that hadn't been voted on previously.
I just have one other question, Justin. When are they projecting to start that project?
So if it gets worked tonight, I'm projected to start sometime at the end of February. Just depends also on how fast I could get the paperwork done with the contractor. Because of course I can't talk to them until it's approved and awarded. So from there, I'll be able to get more of an answer on that part. But they have six months to finish the job.
Okay. And do you know, like I said, I was trying to look at the actual numbers. Do you know if they have any kind of plans to like reseed in there where they're cutting?
Yes, there is, there is some reseeding in there. And yeah. Even though it's a lump sum, it, and the bidding itself, it says the entire irrigation system and anything that's in the plans respects. And in the plans and specs, it does show that part, so. We probably won't be seeding for the whole entire golf course, but where they're at, yeah.
Yes.
Any more questions?
Good. Do you have any info on this contractor?
Yes, so after I looked at their website, I had Jeff from Pland. He actually, I told him who it was. He looked it up and I was actually pretty impressed. They actually do a lot of golf courses around the whole country. A lot of the big tournament, golf tournaments that they do around the country, they do a lot of those.
They just did Las Lunas as well.
Los Alamos, yeah, so they just did Las Alamos. And I do believe it was, I think they got that done in less than two months.
So they, they have the qualifications to?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Bread and butter is strictly golf courses, basically, so.
I'm excited to get this started. I don't even golf and I'm excited to get this started because I get so many phone calls about it, but... Does anybody else have any more questions? No?
That is all eighteen holes, correct?
Yes, and the driving range.
And the driving range.
And they're supposed to do three holes at a time. And once they continue, then we'll proceed on scheduling based on how fast they get each three holes done, so.
Great idea.
And they will be starting on the back nine first.
I did a presentation at Rotary the other day. So I already knew all this, so it's not like I'm not engaged. It just happened.
You didn't invite me?
I'm sorry. I was asked at the very last minute. You should have seen me scrambling, but anyway.
I'll just make a motion to approve Public Works Bid 2024-012.
Okay, for item seven, I have a motion from Commissioner Riden. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Can we put up the vote, please?
I don't know what's going on.
Are you learning?
My computer. Yeah, mine's acting up, too.
Oh, no.
I don't have the vote on my screen, Rachel.
Click that e-vote.
I can't even get there.
In the, in the left-hand corner, next to Agenda, it says e-vote with a check mark at the top, top left.
Change your screen.
Yep, on that side.
It went away. Normally, this is where it's at.
Where do you go to?
Oh, you're lost, I guess. Okay. Go to... Okay, right there.
Thank you. I got it. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. I do this at work.
And what is your vote, Commissioner Burnett?
Aye. My thing just disappeared.
Mine did, too.
It's like I kicked him out of the meeting.
Okay. And motion passes six zero. And I see some smiles in the audience. Perfect. All righty. We will have a green golf course. We will have a green golf course, right? Okay. All right. Moving on, okay, so item eleven is, I don't know his name.
Is he here tonight?
I don't know. That's what I'm trying to find out. So item eleven...
Mr. Steven Isler.
Property owner here tonight?
I don't see him here.
No? Okay, so we just need to move on then, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Property owner is not here for item eleven, so we're going to move on to item twelve. Item twelve, under unfinished business, consider and act upon ordinance 1707 for first publication of a MAP amendment. And Stella?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. Yes, I am back with this item. Can I get the slideshow? There you go. So I am sure you all remember, I brought this item in front of you back September 24th of 2024. So the property owner is requesting that, requests a MAP amendment to change the zoning of the property known as 1701 Cuba Avenue from R1 Single Family Dwelling District, excuse me, to R3 Two Family Dwelling District. The applicants, the owners are Terrence and Christina Makin. The representative is Mr. Anthony Makin. I don't know if he's here this evening. So here is the zoning area. What is in green is actually another, that's the apartment complex that is right around the corner from the, the proposed property we're looking at this evening. This is just my protest area, my 200-foot protest area where mailings went out. A few pictures. So what we're looking at is a, currently a garage workshop. So this, this view here is, is... It's, it's on a corner lot. So anyway, so, so what I'm showing you there, you see the garage door. That is the little area and it's a total of 628 square foot. So currently, there is this bathroom. It just consists of a sink and toilet. If this zoning is approved, he plans on extending that and adding a shower. Just to give you a view, on the left-hand side is the shop area where he already has electric, water and gas running to it. He has a refrigerator in there and counter space. It's just basically used as a workshop. The picture on the right is the garage area. So if the zoning is approved, they will look at converting that and making that the bedroom of this little apartment. I just threw in all sorts of pictures in here just to try and give you an idea. I know at the last meeting, there were questions about the garage door. What's going to happen with that? Well, that garage door is going to remain because the main entrance, entrance to this little area is actually on the north side. So it's, you go through, for this area, you can park at this carport or you can park on the other side of the building, as you see this one car here. And then you have entrances going around to the north side of the building and that's where the main door is located. I just threw in the electrical panel right there at, at that little shop. So I did put together a little report just to give you a little more information. So I'll go through that. So the applicant has submitted an application to rezone the property located at 1701 Cuba Avenue from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to R3 Two Family Dwelling District. The property owner intends to convert the garage slash workshop into a one-bedroom rental. The bedroom space will be located within the garage portion of the building and the garage door will not be replaced since the entry to the building is on the north side. There is currently a restroom that has a toilet and a sink. Once again, if the request is approved, the property owner intends to enlarge the restroom space and add a shower. There is currently electricity, gas and water available to the garage slash workshop and a mini-split system serves as a heat and air conditioning for this area. There is one electric meter, one water meter and one gas meter servicing both the main house and the shop. Currently, the main home on the property is a rental and is occupied. The rear yard will be a shared space between the tenants occupying both spaces. So just to go over my findings of fact, I mentioned most of this. The application was filed back in August, August 14th of 2024. The legal notice was published in the Alamogordo Daily News. Thirty-four letters were mailed by certified return receipt mail to all property owners of record within the 200-foot radius, excluding the public right-of-way of the property for which the zoning request is, or the rezoning is sought. As of January 7, 2025, there have been two letters, and this was way back right after I sent those letters, returned undeliverable and no letters of opposition have been received. Two phone calls were received back then requesting further information, but they had no opposition. Again, the case was brought before the commission on September 24th, 2024. And by a vote of seven zero, it was tabled and staff was directed to bring it back at a later date with little more information regarding the current state of the proposed converted garage.
So I think we tabled this to find out if he had permitted it, correct?
You, you wanted a little bit more information as far as permits. I have no record of any permits. I couldn't find any, I mean, for construction, there weren't any in our, in our system. I looked in CID system and I didn't find any for the electrical or plumbing. So, but like I said, I don't know if the...
Representative is here?
Nope. So I can't answer, I didn't find proof of any permits.
Sounds like they're going to permit and do some additional work.
If they're going to do the additional work, that was my conversation with them. They are going to have to pull the proper permits and CID may make them, you know, do some extra work there for the permits that possibly were not pulled. I have had that conversation with the representative and I explained that if I saw that permits were not being pulled and work was being done... then I'd come back in front of you and ask you all to resend the rezoning to ensure that we do this correctly and get those permits.
Hey Stella?
Yes, sir.
In this bathroom, is there actually a toilet in there, or is it just a vanity?
No, there is, and I should have put a picture, but to the right of that vanity, there is a toilet. Yeah, and that's.
So someone had to put plumbing in there?
There, there, yes. I looked in, like I said, plumbing, electric.
Could have been there 30 years ago, you know. That place has been like that for a long time.
I don't know. I was hoping that the, the representative would be here this evening. I asked him to be here to answer those questions that I cannot.
Yeah, because I believe that's the reason we had tabled it.
I'm sorry?
I said, I believe that's the reason we had tabled it, was for the permitting aspect of it.
Well, now it's on the radar, so obviously, it'll be a little more difficult to do this work without a permit since we know about it.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
It's not that difficult, is what Commissioner Riden's saying. Don't say that in front of me.
Because my garage is almost the exact same way. It's got a bathroom and everything in it.
But you didn't do that.
If I remember right, there was a.
I didn't do it, but there was a, somebody did.
A little old man lived in that house for a long, I grew up right there, in that area, and when he passed away, then it changed hands finally. It used to have bushes and trees all around it, and it was really ugly and overgrown. And it was probably 20, 25 years ago he passed away, and then they, they probably did a lot of that work.
And, and it's actually a really nice little area in, in the shared backyard that both tenants will be sharing. It's nice, it's set up really nice and comfortable, and.
Well, and I think in fairness.